The flooring would be installed by the highway department as time allows. And then funding for this would come from half of it, I believe, from buildings and grounds and half from our contingent account. So any questions on that?
I do have a quick question Chuck. That's great. I and glad we're supporting the library. Is that just for the first floor? Does it include the downstairs as well?
Just the first floor.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
What are we going to have remaining in the building and contingent? Is this affecting ever other plans? What do we have remaining in those two funds after we do this? And does this affect any of our other plans?
No. No, we have a contingency account every year that we put in our budget.
Which was fifty years.
Things like this.
Forty thousand dollars.
Forty.
See account in this, although there is another item in tonight's packet that would draw about the same amount out of it. And building its grounds and twenty thousand. And.
At first, I think at first we were thinking of ARPA money. But we decided, you know, leave that alone till we're kind of done with.
Yep.
With what we're doing down at the community park and then we would go.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same page there. Let's. It's probably is it time now to go back to the ARPA and take a look where we are?
Yeah.
So if you want to do that over the next couple of weeks, we can, we can always then after that, look into moving from ARPA, taking these from ARPA funds as well, right? We could do a transfer.
We could. We'd have to vote on it again or change your vote, but.
Well, I think.
Kathleen.
Why wouldn't we just leave it at this?
Well, we could, yeah, because we can use a contingent for other things, so.
Yeah.
I know we had it in the original Excel for ARPA, but we'll just go back and.
We did, but to be asked for the accounts of him, Ken, I had a, had a talk. And even in the beginning, that's why this is kind of a misprint there. That's why it says funding would come half from, because that was the way it was originally talked about, half of it from our plan, half of it from buildings and grounds and then. So it's kind of come full circle.
Yeah, my, my only concern, and we had a great conversation about it, is we have some other priorities we're looking at. We have sort of the West Falls Library on our, on our agenda for ARPA funds. And frankly, I don't have a good grasp where we are on our ARPA funds. Uh, we might still have some contingencies with the pool, although I, I assume we're getting to the point where maybe we're past those, but uh, we never know. Yeah, yeah, knocking whatever material this is. And yeah, laminate has lovely laminate. Um, yeah, so why not hang on those ARPA funds? So we got them in.
All right, well, let's take a look over the next couple of weeks and figure it out and.
Where the art is?
Yeah.
Actually, I just got a spreadsheet from Kathleen. A week or so ago, uh, so I could tell you pretty darn close.
Okay.
Good with it? Move it on to the agenda. All right, next, number three is the gas well maintenance proposal. Um. The current or the person that used to do it is retired. Uh, we have a new man. Um, here's the quote is on here at a hundred and seventy five dollars a month. And it shows what it includes. We might have to, or I believe we're going to have to add a meter. Um, and we can probably get a used one for eleven hundred dollars and. Uh, this. New person is also wanting to retire, so, but he did offer um us. The fact that he would train a couple, maybe of our highway department people to take over the maintenance, so. Um, we'd have to look at that, decide maybe um. A possible stipend, maybe we would get two, uh, we talked about it today, actually, two, um, two highway department people and maybe give them a little stipend. To do that, um, but we need to talk, we need to talk to Dave, you know, um, we need to talk to. Which people we could get to do it. And um. We'd also have to amend the union contract to accept that. But for now, we need to get someone in here and start maintaining the wells, so. Uh, these, this is the proposal. Uh, we all had a chance to read it. Have any questions on it?
And just so everybody's clear, uh, unfortunately, we can't come up with the exact amount because he has parts in here, which we don't know exactly what that's going to cost, so we cannot say that his bill is going to be X dollars. Um. You know, he's got his hourly rate here in front of us and, you know, he's going to give us the parts at, at cost. But we don't know exactly what that is.
I remember looking at the production of that well. I mean, we're still ahead of the game, right? It wasn't a big number that it's producing, but we're staying ahead of it.
Not a big number, but it's, it's ahead of this.
Gotcha. So I mean, what are you going to do?
I mean, these will be relatively small, you know, he's, he's got a wax tape to go around the bottom of the.
Yeah.
Where the grade meets the, the well casing there. Well, you know, that's, that's certainly not going to be a.
Going to break the bank. These, I mean, I imagine they're out in the elements, so they must take quite a bit of abuse, these uh, wells and just the nature of what they do. Make some sort of, it seems like it needs to get fixed a lot, I guess, is what I've noticed.
They need to.
Early requires maintenance, regular maintenance.
Well, it does, but they have to be read every month.
Okay.
And uh.
And that's part of the services you get out there and read it.
And that's part of the service that we'd be trading. Two people from the highway and we're training two people from the highway so that number one, uh, we don't have to go through the retraining again someday, but. Sure as shoot, and it's gonna need to be read when somebody's on vacation and, and there'll just be two people there to, to. Hopefully, I mean, Mike Angelfinger was the, was the one main one right now. He's got some. Um. Well, experience, um, but hopefully, uh, you know, somebody. Who might be here a little bit longer could get that training and take over and carry on with it.
Sounds good.
So the name of the, the new gentleman's field service, Inc., David, um. Wirsba.
Yeah.
So um, you'd like to put this on the agenda and. They're approved.
Do we, where, where does this classify in our procurement policy?
Say that again, Luke.
In our procurement policy, where does this classify?
Oh. Well, I mean, if you wanted to do it by the month, it would be way under the three thousand dollars.
Do we need like, we need two verbal quotes or something for the?
I, I don't think you're going to get them. Kathleen looked and looked and looked because well tenders are a dying breed. I don't think you're going to get another quote.
Yeah, I'm okay, just as long as we're in compliance with that. So if we can, Kathleen can write a letter that she's. Made attempts to find someone else, then we'll be okay.
Yes, actually, for a while there, she didn't think she was going to find anybody.
No, let's just put that in with the, when we do the audit, the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on. Your fours are two thousand and twenty-three fireworks agreement. And it looks like he's staying with the same price as last year, sixteen thousand dollars. Any questions on that? And it was a great show, so. So we'll put that on. Next is the water district, uh, Z P deficit. And this is a request from Kathleen Moffett. Falling water districts have a fund balance resulting from water fees and more interest in penalties since there is no debt associated with these funds. She asked that we transfer five thousand each one of those funds to Z P, just the private roads. And the twenty thousand transfer will correct the twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollar deficit. Deficit and create a small fund balance for future costs. Uh, do you guys have time to look this over and talk to them or any questions?
Yeah, Bridgette did a great job explaining the uh, process, so that was uh, much appreciated.
I got to thank Bridgette too, because uh, between her and Kathleen, um, there's a lot of work involved. Getting this and um. She's not here. Hopefully, she's, maybe she's watching, um, but and, and Martha, by the way, and um. Water, the water districts very complicated. Um, thing that we're trying to get out, move on is we moved our water districts to the area county. Uh, water authority, so, and this would start uh, finalizing that, so thank you for doing that.
So are we in a hurry to approve this today?
I'm sorry?
Are we in a hurry to approve this today? Is there a reason to do it today?
Yes. It's very important, actually, we. We need to move on from this because. Uh, we have to set the new water rates and this, is there an issue?
Well, yeah, not a legal one, but um. I mean, I'd like a little clarity as to where the, the payments were coming from, because it, I don't want to be taken from one water district to pay another. There's an element of unfairness in that.
Um. Do you want to?
Well.
Not a legal issue.
Not a legal issue, because the, the law specifically allows for surplus funds to be taken from a district and spent. On, on water expenses across the town, so um, it's, this is really, I think, a policy issue that Luke is talking about.
And, and if it helps, Luke, these listed water districts. No longer exist. They, they got, um. You know, when Erie County Water took over, it's, it's all.
They have no debt.
In theirs. Yeah, yeah. It's all one, so I mean, that money is really just sitting there.
So W seven, the people that were hooked up to that, it looks, so there was, there was an overpayment over how many years of, of that amount, for example?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, many, so I mean, people come and go, move in and move out, um.
But, but, but the over, overpayment is. You know, there, there needs to be a fund balance there when there was that water dish but there, it's just that they don't have any debt, but that fund. Balances in case there's maintenance needed. There's a water line break, there's, there's something there and. Now that Erie County Water. Has our water.
There is no maintenance for us.
There's no maintenance for us and that, those monies are just sitting there.
Yeah, okay, um. Man, if we have to move forward, we can do it. I just uh, slightly uncomfortable with the. But um, but we can move forward with it.
Okay. Okay, next we have six, and this is a notice of public hearing. Uh, take notice that a public hearing will be held by the town board of town Aurora. Twenty-seventh day, February two thousand twenty-three, at seven o'clock at the Aurora Municipal Center. And this is for um. Local law. To increase the maximum annual income eligibility for disabled persons with a limited income to receive a real property tax exemption. So um, this is something I believe the county has uh, passed. Um, and it's something that um, I think we should go ahead and do the same. You guys good with that?
Yep.
And we have the same um. Public hearing or another public hearing for the same day, and this is for uh. Eligibility for alternative veterans exemptions to receive a real property tax exemption, so um, on the same order. But this will be a public hearing for that local law and it'll be at the same. Date next, our next meeting. Any questions on that? Guys are good with it?
Yep.
Very good. All right, next we have the site plan special use permit for West Falls and the Center of Arts, eighteen sixty-three Davis Road. And um. Jim, do you want to talk on this or you want me to?
I could talk at, uh, Bill Pianzik is here uh, as well.
Okay.
Yeah, but absolutely.
Yeah, come on up.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, are you?
Good.
Want me to describe?
Sure, yeah, tell us what you're up to.
So um, we basically, we have about seven and a half, eight acres. Uh, we're a music venue. Most of what we do is um, free. We have free programs for kids, free programs for veterans, free programs for people with Alzheimer dementia and their caregivers. Um, and then we fund it by doing music concerts, um, and what we would like to do um, is build. An amphitheater in the back um, with. A sculpture park. Larry Grifth is going to be doing the sculpture park for us and some Airbnb tree houses.
So is that like?
In the back? We go, yeah, we go back to the railroad tracks.
Good. Um, any questions from the board over here?
At this point, we're referring to the planning board, right?
Yeah, but I mean, uh, if you have any questions before that.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the ground back there is notoriously not good, yeah, from an environmental standpoint, or is that?
Is it what? I'm sorry.
Not, have, have there been any studies on how safe the, the, the ground is back there?
As far as wet?
As far as chemicals or what's left there.
So um, when I bought the property back in, uh, what was it, ninety-eight, I have, I have all the D E C paperwork, so we had everything remediated. Um, we had tanks dug up, we had the dirt like separated for a hundred and twenty days, and I, I have all that paperwork.
That's good. I think the planning world will probably be, they, they know about that, so it might be good to.
Okay.
Provide something to them just to not delay it for you.
We also are having Buffalo Tree House build everything, so.
Sounds good.
And, and uh. This is a, a beautiful project, a very ambitious project.
It is, yeah, it's, it's uh, it's about three and a half million dollars.
So the stage that we're talking about here is about twenty-five hundred square feet. Is that, is that what I?
It is, yeah, uh, so there's green rooms below grade um, for bands. And then there's a little concession area and some bathrooms and above ground is the stage. It looks like a beehive from on top.
Yeah, and when you say the concessions of the three hundred foot refreshment stand, is that part of this drawing? That's part of a much larger with. Is that correct?
It is. Um, I, we do have the complete plans, I think.
I was going to ask you if, maybe when it goes to the planning board or, or.
We, we provided them, I think we provided, we provided all the.
That we could just pick peek at.
Yeah, I think we have, uh, everything's architecturally stamped.
Um, and is the Airbnb going to be part of the project now?
It's, we're doing it in stages. Yeah, we're doing it in stages, but we do have the plans.
So when you're asking for a site plan review and, and approval. It excludes. The treehouses.
I believe we're trying to go for everything at the same time. Um. I'm, I'm not sure.
Um. Well, we'll send it to the planning board and see where we go with it.
Rico was going to be here and he's a little late, but he, the, the, the treehouse part was sort of, he was going to help me.
Yeah, what I, I was going to talk about this a little bit later, but um, we did get feedback on our New York Forward grant application. And um, there were, there were a couple of things to take out of it, if I can, I'll just talk about it now, because it is pertinent here. So we, we discovered that we were at the top of the application, um, applications till the end. And so it was a very competitive, very competitive submission. Um, and what we were told by the New York Forward, by the, 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 what is it, uh, which group is it that awards it, the New York State Environmental?
Uh, I know it's the Empire State.
Empire State Development, yeah. So they, they have said two things they want to do, first of all, to come out to West Falls, take a look at these projects. And their criticism was that the projects were not far enough along, and so it was unclear where other funds would be coming to and how they would be providing funds as well. So I think even at this stage, even though they haven't announced the, the second round of funding, which is expected this year, that we could probably, I mean, what we want to do is go to West Falls Advisory Committee Meeting, but with that. Additional funding, we could then have more specific figures to put into that second application. And invite them out to take a look at your plans and walk around as soon as the spring comes, and that might provide an additional source of funding if we.
When we initially applied for that, this was not part of it.
Yep.
Those other improvements that we were going to do within the building and the parking lot and signage and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think that this with, with the specific numbers with your plans already, that, that's really going to help the application. And, you know, we didn't, we didn't get the first time around, but um, they're also willing to look at the application before we submit it and give us pointers, so. I think we're, we're much better off this year and you're much farther along this year as well, and that's going to help us, so we'll have to coordinate that and maybe try to get those funds to.
We're excited.
Yeah, and look, I mean, I, I, I think uh, anyone who's, who's been to a town board meeting understands this is a nonprofit. It'll continue as a, as a nonprofit venture, at least uh. You know, I think we, I can't remember how long the lease was for uh.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five years anyways, uh, for that uh, backend, so it's been in uh, uh, the works for eight years. Uh, Bill and Carolyn have done some really amazing things. The very first. Uh, three years was the front end where the, where the stages, that was the whole venue. And then every year it's been moving and progressing uh, with grants and funds and, and concerts and things like that.
Our pocket, if I can, just for a second, explain what we do. So the, the kids program, and this will just take a minute, but I think you'd be interested in what we do. Kids program, we invite kids from six to seventeen, they bring an instrument, we have three people from Buffalo Music Hall of Fame, and they put together a band, and after about nine months, they open for a concert. For us, and then one at um, Sportsman's. Our veterans program is we teach guitar, ukulele and harmonica. And we give them the instruments and over about three months, um, it's more of a social event. And it's, it's great for the veterans. The program that we're most proud of is the Alzheimer dementia caregiver program. And um, when we first started it, we thought about four to six would be successful. What we um, offer is a free lunch and a free um, uh, concert. And people that.
Hall of Fame musician.
And people that don't talk, they're non-communicative at home, they come here and they sing the songs. We have forty to fifty people in West Falls, other communities have saw what we've done. We're in Amherst now. Fifty to sixty people are in the Dale Association, Lockport, we're a Temple Basion and the Hispanic Cultural Center. We do it all from here, we fund it, we, we served forty-seven hundred lunches last year. So there's a gentleman that comes, he can't walk, we help him in, he sits down, the music starts, he dances with his wife. Music stops, he sits down. So what we found is the power of music is unreal. That's what we do.
Yeah.
Great.
So.
Well, I, I, I think we, yeah, you've convinced us a long time ago and we're, we're, you know, it's, it's so exciting what's in West Falls. We need to take all this and we have the opportunity now to bring them out and, and that'll help our application this year, so it's.
Awesome.
Great.
One last question, and this is kind of directed to Liz, our code enforcement officer. This is a little bit different than what I'm accustomed to seeing anyway. Um. Do these prints for the Airbnb treehouses need to have an engineer stamp on them?
When they go for construction, yes, because then it's going to have all the details on um, where the trees are located. Because it's not, they're not just set on posts, um, they're also um. Supported by the trees in the area and their specific engineered um, connections that have to be made. So the stamp that we, so the plans that we get at the time of construction will be stamped.
I'll be curious to see what happens in fifteen years when the tree grows.
For that.
I think, so in, 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 for my clarification, obviously, this is a, it sounds like a fantastic project. But it sounds like we'll have to do planning board, and then we'll have to look at special use permits, because this is quite a elaborate undertaking in terms of what you want to offer there, but I think it all really sounds neat. I'm excited about it.
Yes, because you have full-time people and you're going to have music, um, uh, I think I got this wrong, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday from. A certain time until ten at night.
And we'd like to have that option, but I, I'm not, I'm not sure that we'll have it Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
But to Councilman McCann's point is, we'll have to go through a special use permit with that.
Right. Yeah, I think this is kind of give you as much as we possibly could give the uh, community and the board as much as we possibly could. Um, to give you an idea so that we weren't um, sort of parceling it out like, oh, by the way, we want to do a Airbnb, we want to give you as much as possible. And then we'll work to see what um, what the planning and everything else tells us.
To get a full picture of what you're anticipating.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So we'll move this on to the next meeting and we'll end up referring it to the planning board. Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Bill.
And, and one more thing, it's much better to have you here as the representative than these uh, other guys who usually speak about it, so.
All right. Next we have. Site plan for ten forty-five Davis Road. It's, it's Bob, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so um.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably easier. Let us know what you're doing.
Alrighty. So this is ten forty.
Sorry, Bob, it's Bob Casper's here?
Casper's, yeah.
Can you spell it for?
I have K A S P R Z A K.
Thank you.
So I don't know if everybody's familiar with the existing gas station in Delhi that's there. Um. Primarily, we are going to be adding two coolers to the building, this larger cooler.
If you could speak right into the mic.
Yeah, this is thirty-six by sixteen off the back of the building. And then a side cooler, uh, which is going to be um, as I recall, thirty-four by eight. The interior, the entire um, deli convenience store is going to be renovated, uh, it's going to be totally gutted, all new flooring. Uh, wall finishes, ceilings, lighting, heating, cooling, the roof's going to be ripped off. Um, well, actually not, actually a portion of the roof only, uh, where the existing wood overhang is, because that's been, it's deteriorated. Uh, we're going to keep the existing um, board or board and baton metal roof that's there now. Um, which is right. Here. So per this front elevation, we're going to renovate the entire front. Um, just going back to the site plan, we, we're proposing. Six parking spaces north or, yeah, north and then south. Um. We're going to stripe the side here, there'll be a handicap space. Uh, these spaces are off the right away by twenty-four feet, uh, minimums twenty. Um, the spaces are going to be nine by nineteen. Um. And as you could see, the front's going to be a. A variety of stone, uh, the, the existing metal roof and then uh, stucco. Uh. Some accents, the, there'll be uh, wall sconces within the decorative columns. Um. This entrance way will come out from a, a gable, from the large gable. Um, and then you could see the entire. A, a good portion of the roof has been removed, the one that has been deteriorated. Um, they're seating out there now, but it's going to be moved inside, so it could be used all year round. So same amount of seats, maybe actually, you know, a few less. Um. When you walk in this space, the uh, the larger cooler is actually a, it's a beer cave. Um, so they use uh, local breweries, like forty-two North will probably have, you know, beer in here and. Uh, some of the other breweries from the area close by, so it's not just all um, national brands. It's pretty much it. I don't know if there's any questions.
Are you going to use the existing canopy for the fuel cells and? That'll be, and everything for the fuel, nothing will change on the fuel side, so all the tanks, all that's been checked out and environmentally, it's part of it, yeah.
We, we will also be putting in a new septic system, because the existing one's in rough shape. Um, that's going to be engineered and we're going to need health department approval. Uh, this area right in here, it's a large green space, and we're proposing the two sets of parking. Um, we will, once we engage an engineer to design the, the new septic. See if we can actually maintain the twelve spaces. If, if we have to reduce it by six. Or whatever he recommends to accommodate the new septic leach field, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. We need health department approval. Um, not necessarily town or village approval, but actually health department approval, I believe. Um not necessarily town or village approval, but actually health department approval, I believe. So.
So what we have in front of us, uh gentlemen, is um we, we could table this and wait for health department approval, or we could approve it tonight contingent upon health department approval.
So I have a couple of questions, if I may. Is, is the actual footprint of the building changing or what you described is a lot of interior changes, some roof changes and some cosmetic changes, but is the building getting larger?
Um no, just by the fact we're, we're adding coolers.
Okay.
Is really the only addition to the footprint.
So Liz, are we running into any uh like where we need any variances with that? Is a parking lot going to impede on the neighboring lot or anything of that sort that we have to take into consideration?
Everything is existing right now. The only thing that's new are the addition of the um, the two sets of coolers and the proposed um parking spaces. Um so there isn't anything that would impact a neighboring property. It's just um changes around this existing.
So I guess I'm confused as a, as a, just from my, from my understanding, are the coolers outside?
Yeah, the coolers are outside. They're going to go on the, um right now there's pavement.
Okay.
So we're going to dig up the pavement. We got to put in a concrete slab.
Gotcha. Okay, that's a bright, so you're talking about.
Yeah.
Inside the building, I didn't.
Yeah, they're basically, you know, from the front, here's the, the one on the side.
Okay, I got you.
So that's kind of the profile.
So the mechanics of the cooler are out, are outside.
The mechanics are outside. Yep.
Okay, it's uh, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Chuck.
Just to, just to tag on what Councilman McCann is saying here. So I mean, you have a very nice looking building. You got stone and stucco and, and standing scene roof and all that, but the coolers are drawn as a flat roof. So is that cooler a whole separate entity that is more or less just pushed up against the existing building?
Yes, and it.
Is it?
It's.
On the outside?
It's, it's uh, it's, yeah, it's, it's pre-finished stainless steel, the same color as the building.
So the doors for the cooler on?
At the inside.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, as you walk in, so as you walk into the store, there'll be a bank of coolers here for like soda, water, things of that nature.
Does that sit on a separate foundation or that's just literally just sits on?
No, it, it has a, it has a slab and a foundation, a perimeter foundation. Yep. Yeah, it's insulated.
And I mean, I I gotta say that when I first looked at the plan, the only reservation that I really have is you have parking in the front and people are going to walk right through the main traffic flow, which is to the gas pumps and to the front door. We, um, have you tried uh or, or, you know, given any thought to try and get that parking in the rear or the, or the north side or that just plain won't work?
Yeah, this is, this is really tight and we do have deliveries that come around the back. So there's not a whole lot of room on each side.
Nice.
Right there, right?
Yes. Yes.
They pull around like this, right?
Right.
If, if we tried to like, uh, like, yeah, park near, we're just fine. If we try to make it tighter, we, we don't want like a, any concern for the trucks. So, so we do have like for the gas station, like that's a lot of parking. This is, this is like full for the employees and stuff. We don't just kind of, it's kind of traffic blocking like to your concern. Like to say, it's like, it's not going to be fun. But eventually you have that there and then people park, obviously four cars there at the dispensers. But yeah, so, so we do end up working there and here. The, they would get, they would get, right? Because there's a, there's a, the appropriate thing, like kerosene dispenser there too. Mm-hmm. So if you add more parking here because we have a store, it's right here. They, there's elevation. So, but you can't see the, the prints, but there's an elevation sheet right there gathered on the lines. But there, there's really not a lot.
Well. Yeah, when they fill up and they.
Yeah.
They go around here. So I'm, I basically, you know, that amount of space is what they need to make their turning radiuses pretty much. So especially with the cooler, the beer cave turned out.
And where do the gas deliveries come? Where did, where do the trucks come in for the gas?
The gas deliveries? Gas deliveries.
Where do the gas uh trucks come in for delivery? Where do you park those?
The tanks are here. They come in here. They drop their load.
So they, so they go around the building when they're done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is, are, are the gas, uh, are they monodirectional, meaning everybody pulls in the same direction and exits the same direction? Okay, they come from whatever direction. Gotcha. Okay.
And, and then I, I did have a concern or maybe not a concern, but just a question about, uh, I don't know if you've done uh this type of work uh anywhere before. Is there, uh, should we be concerned that there's going to be uh a lot of noise twenty-four hours a day from the coolers being located outside?
Oh, yeah, we have, we have all the locations. And most of them have coolers outside like that.
Okay.
Same as like at your house.
Okay. And I, this isn't really a residential, but do you have uh those of coolers i- in residential and, and any of the other ten or eleven places? Right. And no complaints?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we, right in the Village of Hamburg on Pierce.
Okay.
There's a, one was renovated, so. Yeah, it's, uh, the, the unit on top is actually smaller than the condensing, it, it's smaller than your residential condensing unit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
It's a small.
Most, most of those units are always outside, Jim. They never put them inside the building.
Yeah, I, I.
So the only thing you're seeing is the actual cooler.
Right.
Not the compressor right now.
Yeah, and I appreciate you saying that. I, I didn't know, I should have asked you what size it was, but you're saying it's smaller than a, than a residential.
You, you could see, you could see it right there.
Yeah.
This little rendition here is approximately the size in relationship to the beer cave. Uh see, it's on top of the beer cave.
Oh, that's it right there then?
That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, they're there. Right there.
Perfect.
Are there any other questions from the board? Um so we have to decide putting in for the next, uh, next meeting whether we want to go ahead and approve this um with contingent upon health department approval or tabling it until we hear from the health department about the septic system and a parking. That's the issue.
Is there any advantage to tabling it, waiting for the health department? I mean, the health department's going to thumbs up or thumbs down it, right? I mean, there's only or tell them to change it. I guess there's three possible outcomes.
If you can't, if you can't have any parking in the front, like all, if the health department says they need that whole patch of green space for the leach field, did you want to try and make any different accommodations around the back or, or uh change the size of the beer caves or wrapped around the corner or anything like that? Or if you don't get the parking there, you're just playing.
So currently, this is the parking we have. Yeah, we're not, we're not reducing it. We would like to add, but if they don't.
If they don't, then you're.
They say we can't do it.
I think they could really take, take one or all, I would think at least feel with uh, I mean, both sides.
Yeah, well, we have.
I'd say like one side's got to go.
We got us, we're going to have it engineered.
Who knows?
By a civil engineer.
Does this, does this hurt you if we tabled it tonight? Or does it hold you up or what? Because you really can't do anything until we hear from them anyway, right?
You, you would treat that as two separate entities? There's the parking?
Well, I would start the drawings for them because we, it's going to go out to bid and.
So it would.
It would happen a little bit. Okay. Yeah, I, at the same time, we're going to get the drawings done for the septic while we're doing our drawings. We got to do all the engineering. It's going to take a little bit of time.
Okay. Yeah, I personally don't have a problem doing a contingent because if they don't get it, they don't get it. Um and that way it doesn't hold up the project on, and um, um, I don't know how you guys feel.
Yeah, I'm fine with the contingent. If there's, there's something that comes back that you're going to change, then you would need to amend the special use permit, right? So you go back here and. Um, I don't think we need a special use permit. Or sorry, yeah. Just a site plan? Yes. Yeah, I mean, if we remove parking spaces, would we have to come back?
Well.
It doesn't matter, I guess.
We're here to, to vote on the site plan and.
Because it's a removal, it's not any parking spaces, so.
So can we do that, Martha? And just if we approve it contingent and they have to change the site plan, would it just be take it, we, we have to re-vote on it or?
That depends on how much of a change they're making.
If they just remove the parking, same. No, okay. All right. So that would be the only change you're making. If, if, if they come back and say.
I mean, it's just.
You can't, you can't have all that parking there. You can only have one side or the other.
Yeah.
That's fine. You're not going to make any other changes.
No, I don't think so. No, no. I think this is pretty well set and stone as far as, you know, what we'd like to do.
Is, is Bob's Deli closed right now? I haven't been by there in a while. Okay, so this'll, will, will it close for this process? Okay, because I know it's important to that.
Yeah.
That neighborhood. I know it's, it's vital. It's kind of a, without going into the village, it's, it's a really nice place to grab anything quick, so.
I mean, I mean, there may be like a week as we're doing flooring or because we're doing tile.
Yeah, at some point, yeah. That's great. I'm glad, I'm glad something's moving in. I know, I know they had retired, so that's good and I'm comfortable with the contingent thing.
Okay. Yeah, but we're, so we're doing a contingent on approval.
Health Department.
Health Department approval.
On the site plan that includes the parking up front. Um and if they don't, and they might say that, um, because their, their leach field is right, right between the parking.
Yeah, it's right, right here. I'm just saying, so how we make that motion, we move to approve it contingent on approval. If it's not approved, then we have not approved it. Right? So I think you would have to come back.
Erie County is going to approve the septic.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of what it takes to put the septic in there. Um whether or not they can make the changes to the system and keep the parking as they're proposing. Or if some of that parking has to be removed.
Yeah, I just trying to think of the right motion to make here. Because we're contingent on approval by Erie County.
Well, then, yeah, just contingent upon approval of health department or removing uh parking place, uh spots that.
Yeah, the twelve, the, the number of parking spaces.
They need for.
The number of parking spaces are pretty much contingent upon approval. I think that's.
And everyone. So it would be two separate. We approve everything to do with the building. And we prove in a contingent basis their plans to upgrade the septic. Does that make sense? Yeah, that way the building's all set. You're not waiting on the belly thing for the building. You don't have to wait on the building for Erie County to say you can do the septic, which we know they're going to say.
But yeah, the only other, maybe, maybe it's that easy, but i- if Erie County doesn't approve it, it doesn't go forward, right? I mean, if they, if they don't, so I don't even know that we need to do a contingent. If we approve it, Erie County doesn't, it's not going to go forward, right?
If, if it's an issue, Jim, why don't we just approve the, the building itself and not the parking area? And when you get approval from the health department, bring it back and we'll vote on that.
That's fine.
If we approve the building, it'd be the, our county contingent.
Yeah.
It's all one site plan. It's all one site plan.
Yeah, my, my point was, if we approve it contingent on receipt of approval from the health authority and you do not receive that approval, then that's, we're not approving it then, right? Because it was contingent on that receiving that.
Yeah, that's, that's my idea. Was that said? Let's make sure I get credit for that idea. I understand that.
Uh so, so Chuck, thank you for proposing that we propose.
Well, can we, can we separate that?
That's.
Can I come back for me to show them?
All right.
Uh, and Joey, you'll do the. Yeah. All right, uh, maybe we'll do it that way then and keep the uh septic and parking separate.
Yeah.
And um then you're not stalled here. You can continue to go on with your work.
Yeah, thank you. We'll do it concurrently anyways. So we hope to get it approved sooner than later.
Okay.
So.
Sounds good.
And, and I think, you know, you, you probably, I don't know where you're coming from, but you, I don't think you need to come back in if it is approved by the health authority. Just we'll look at it again.
I don't have to.
I don't know if you want to.
We won't really have to, will we?
Yeah, it'll be approved.
Yeah.
No, unless something radical happens.
As long as the health department approves that you guys.
Changes in size, so we'll deal with that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the highway request to purchase a backhoe. And this is from Dave Gunner. Uh, he uh requests that we purchase a two thousand twenty-three case compact track loader model two five nine D three. Um the purchase price would be twenty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars after trading in the highways two thousand seventeen cal- uh Caterpillar backhoe for seventy thousand dollars. Um this will come out of the snow material line. Do you want to talk on that theme?
Yeah, this is just um uh trying to change the needs of the highway back in twenty sixteen when we bought the uh tractor backhoe. At that time, we had the needs of uh, first off, uh, we have to always have something to load our salt and sand material in case our high lift ever goes down. So that is always the primary use for that backhoe. But at the time in twenty sixteen, we still owned all our water lines and that backhoe is used for all the water line repairs. Um and then lastly, uh, it had a grapple buck, bucket on it too. So that we could go around and pick up our chunk wood and brush with the tractor. Okay.
Um, there's an echo in here. It's okay.
So anyway, I lost my train of thought. Okay, so uh we got rid of water, so we don't use that portion of the backhoe anymore. And we bought a brand new excavator a year ago. So now we have an articulating excavator item that basically fulfilled that need of what we were using the backhoe for. And then lastly, we bought the grapple truck in twenty nineteen and we no longer use the clam bucket to pick up the brush. So for the past year, it just really just sits and doesn't get used. Um and uh it needs new tires. So I just started thinking about what the realignment of the type of work we do. It may be good to look in to see what we could get for a trade on it. And I, I was really pleasantly surprised that we could uh trade this in and get the dollars that we got for it. We paid in twenty sixteen ninety-four thousand dollars and we put eleven hundred hours on it. So to get seventy thousand in return later, we owned it very cheap.
Is that a, a rubber trek or?
Okay, so what I was talking still was the backhoe. Why did you get rid of that? So now to flash forward, now the reason to switch the type of equipment now, it will fulfill that first need of loading the trucks if our high lift goes down. It's a very large skid steer track loader that will be able to load over the top. So it will do that, but this uh thing can do a lot more in the type of work that we use for now, including parks work with a tra- it's a track machine. Uh it, if you look at the, what I built it with, it has a cold planer, so we can do all our own rebating for driveways when we pave. Currently now, when we go and do road work, um we never can afford to tie in everybody's driveways well, so we literally just give them a transition ramp. And honestly, it's not really the best way to do it. And a lot of people are not happy. Whereas we never could afford to do that because it's quite expensive to hire a contractor to go driveway by driveway and mill out every driveway. So I looked at that factor that will be able to improve our service with this too. Um and then um echo. Yeah, so anyway, I think it's a good move. Remember that. Uh it's a, it fulfills more of the needs of what we're using the highway department for, including for the bridge projects we're doing. I can use the attachments. I ordered it with a one-foot auger. A lot of times parks department has uh split rail fence to do. Um highway has mailboxes to do in winter, so it'll have an auger. And then lastly, I ordered forks with it. Currently, we use a John Deere tractor with forks, but I don't know if you ever tried to use a farm tractor with forks to unload pellets. It'll definitely be a lot safer. So I think it's a very good move. Um if you look at the price, it's off of the state bid, uh which is a very good price, but on top of that, they even discounted it even more by like forty-five hundred dollars. So I think it's a very good investment.
Yeah. Any questions?
The tide must be turning on new equipment. I know we're getting discounts. So we used to have to throw money at people to get equipment. And now they're, now we're getting deals.
Yeah, in fact, it looks like we might get that second plow truck. So I'll be bringing that to you in another few weeks. So yeah, finally, the shortages are letting up, so.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
I'm good. All good. Thank you.
Well, on it, the next meeting. And then uh the last item on the work session is the code red policy. Um maybe we want to get a chance to go over it. Um I don't know if uh Luke, uh, do you want to say anything on it or?
There, there were some changes made from last meeting after receiving everybody's comments, but the general well, I think the policy generally remains the same, just clearing up language. So if it's emergency, then um there are any number of people who can send out a notification without any other approval, uh chief. um, there are any number of people who can send out a notification without any other approval. Uh, Chief Krieger can go into the system and hit the button. Um, and then we have rules for general notifications, which would be a bridge closure or uh, something like that, that would require the dual approval, uh, sending between eight AM and eight PM. And um, in the beginning here, just the thing is that we'll we'll need to uh, have everybody kind of on board here on email. I think any message that we sent in this first year, we're going to want to communicate between us just to make sure that we get this taken care of. So there's going to be a lot of sort of, hey, do we want to send this out or do we not want to send that out? Um, so bear with us as we try this out and then maybe in a year we'll take a review and see if we want to change anything. So.
Okay, yeah, I'm good with trying it. If we have to change, certainly change it. Yeah, got to start somewhere. We got to start using it.
Yep. And then the the um, the police officers have received access to the full town. Um, so the village, they'll be on the village policy, but just a technical, you know, chief Krieger and everyone has X the whole time. So if it is a true emergency, when they send out a message, it'll go to everybody, um, unless they decide to geo geo target it. Um, other than that, the village then has the village and so we'll start trying to sign people up. We have a QR code down that I did the other day. And uh, texts alerts. So um, now that this is passed, this next step is to try to encourage people to sign up so that we can use it.
I have a good quick question. Are we going to have a way to see who's signing up to purge it? Because there's a lot of people that don't live in the town that have Easter or mailing addresses that believe they live in the town.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be able to purge those or?
Uh, so if they have a, if they sign up for a town address, then they'll be signed up for our program. If not, then they won't. Um, if you're talking about the numbers that are currently in there, they will purge automatically. If we want to, we can send out. Um, the way we we've done this policy is that they will be used for emergencies. So if someone is out of town and gets it, that's better than someone being in town and not getting it. Um, other than that, the general notifications, that is the database that we need to build on our own. So nobody would sign up unless they wanted to sign up for that.
No, what I'm saying is, is that on four rod road in Wales, they have an Easter or mailing address. You you wouldn't believe how many of them think that they live in Easter or um, right, yeah, exactly. So that's what I'm, when we wouldn't be notifying them. So is there going to be a way if they try to sign up?
They they won't be able to. There are the we have, we have, uh, provided the map into the system. And if their address is not within that map, then they'll be notified that, well, if Wales has it, then it'll sign up, tell them that they need to sign up for Wales. But otherwise, it'll, if Wales does not have code red, then they would not be able to sign up to ours. And they would just be notified of that. Not being on postal, no, not based on postal.
But I do believe it's based on your location or your public location. I think you can sign up for code red. If you live in California, if you're traveling through this area and there's a location alert, you'll get that if you're in.
If there's an emergency, yeah, the general notification, they wouldn't, but the emergency, yes. So.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Yeah, and that's what I have, again, working in Buffalo, that have the Buffalo, uh, just for emergencies only, uh, road closures and closing the the government buildings and things like that. That's all I get from from city of Buffalo.
Well, we um, well, we we've been talking to South Wales and West Falls Fire. So they will have access only to their part of the district that's in our, that's in the town.
Right.
But Colden, I know, does have code red, so they will be able to set up if they want to use it that way, so that their access will go to both the town of Aurora and their small portion in Colden. But our policy applies only to the town of Aurora, so.
But all good with it? All right. We'll go and move on to our next meeting, our regular board meeting. And uh, tonight, uh, we have a guest, um, our new county legislator, Jim Malchesky. And he had asked, um, if he could come and talk to the board. He'll be our new representative taking over for Joel Orego. So, um, Jim, if you want to come up and talk and grab the mic and speak right into it and.
And good evening supervisor.
You can take that right out, Jim. Yep.
Okay, perfect. Good evening Supervisor Bach, members of the Aurora Town Board, Department Heads. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. Uh, for you guys who don't know who I am, my name is Jim Malchesky. Uh, prior to being a legislator, I was a councilman in Elma, uh, for the last twelve years. Uh, this is a new venture for myself. I was sworn in on January fifth of this year and very excited about the opportunity that lies ahead. Um, I'm a big believer in communication. I'm a big believer in common sense. Um, right now, one of the first tasks that I have at hand, um, District ten consists of seven different towns in one village, uh, West Seneca, Elma, Marilla, Aurora, Wales, East Aurora, Holland and Colden are in my district. And uh, coming from small town government, um, I need to get out. And I need to meet all of my colleagues in every different town and introduce myself and see what I can do to help you out. Um, I had, I had the pleasure of meeting with Supervisor Bach last week. Um, I have regular conversations with your highway department. Kudos to you guys. Luckiest town around here. Highway department's awesome. Love these guys. Um, in addition to that, last week I met with the Rural Outreach Center out here. Um, tonight after here, I'm going to the VFW post. On Wednesday, I'm meeting with your senior director and your historian. Um, so not bad for a month on the job. Um, with that, I am actually doing something down at the legislature. Um, with that, we've put forth, uh, gas resolution, which has been a very hot topic around town. Uh, when I was, uh, in here last week, Monday for the village of Aurora, they, uh, opted to table talking about it. Um, until they had a heard from the public in a public forum. Um, yeah, I I I think it's something that's very important. And the residents that I'm hearing from are concerned. They're scared. They're frightened. Um, this is something that, um, you know, they're looking at as they're getting their rights taken away, their ability to provide for their family taken away. And uh, when when you have something like that, I I think it's scary. So um, our caucus put forth a resolution which, um, went through eleven to nothing, full bipartisan support over there. And uh, I think it's important. Erie County is the second biggest county in the state of New York, and that pretty much sends a loud and clear message that uh, we're dead set against it. And when you look at a lot of the a lot of the state representatives, you're not hearing too much from them. And that's right there is why it's important on a county level, on a town level. A lot of towns are taking action, doing their own resolutions. Um, we need to be very loud and clear about this, that this isn't something that the people want. So, uh, we're we're working on that. Uh, two weeks ago, we passed a local law which gives the volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers um, a rebate, a ten percent rebate on the assessed value of their properties. Um, it's a sliding scale depending on how long you've been there, uh, minimum two years. And if you've been there for twenty years, it's a perpetual uh, perpetual tax break. So, um, we look at that, uh, that should be voted on probably this upcoming week. And we fully expect full bipartisan support there also. Uh, I look at this as a tool for recruiting. Um, this is one simple thing that's going out across the county. And unfortunately, every town in the county is a little bit different. Coming from rural Elma and everything down here, the needs of the fire departments are not the same as they are in Chikdawag and West Seneca. So this kind of affects every company a little bit different. I'm very proud uh, to have my name on this because at the end of the day, if it helps recruit one or two people, um, there was some success to it. So, um, with that, that was passed at the state level. We intend to pass it at the county level. That's something that also would have to be passed at each town level and each school district. So once we get through it, I'm happy to pass it on to you guys. Take a look at it and, uh, you know, if it's something you feel comfortable with. I'm a big, big, big supporter of first responders. So I think, uh, you know, this is a great tool for them. Um, that's really all I have. I'm, I hope you can sense my my enthusiasm up here. Um, I've hit the job running and I'm looking forward to a fun and exciting year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having me.
Thanks for coming out.
Good for to working with you. All right, next we have the approval of the minutes. Need a motion for the, um, approval of the January twenty-third, two thousand and three work session and meeting minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
Like by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is carried. Next, we have audience one. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to the address the board on any items that are on the agenda. If you do, uh, wish to do so, please come up to the mic and, uh, give us your name.
Good evening, uh, I'm Jeff Markello, um, from the court, Aurora Town Court. I want to apologize, Dave, for the interruptions. I was in the midst of, uh, trying to see through Zoom and then, um, YouTube and then Zoom, whether or not Judge DeFilippo, it was your echo, but I I didn't mean to be interrupting you. Uh, so that was my, my, my bad. Uh, Elizabeth, has has Judge DeFilippo joined, you know? He is on. Wonderful. Um, so, uh, Judge Filippo and I are here to report, uh, some bad news. Uh, we received some bad news a couple of weeks ago and so far as our, our senior court clerk, Elizabeth, excuse me, Alexandria Garbiso, um, needed to, um, resign her position. And so we are down to a single court clerk. Um, we've done some, and that court clerk, by the way, is Elizabeth Wilber. She's doing a bang up job. Elizabeth has almost three months on the job and, uh, and Alex had been working with Elizabeth, doing some on the job training. Um, uh, well, over the last three months and especially jacked it up over the last couple of weeks before Alex's um, last day was last, last Friday. Tony and I are concerned, Judge Filippo and I are concerned about, um, Elizabeth's continuing training on the job training. It's a difficult job being a court clerk. Um, I often will say that there's a twelve month learning curve, uh, between taking the job and really being up to speed and start running with it. Uh, Alex had about a year and a half under her belt and was trained by our previous senior court clerk, Claire Granville, who was dynamite and did a terrific job in training her. And Alex is now sort of, um, well, she had taken the steps to to impart the knowledge to Elizabeth that that she had gotten from Claire. Anyways, um, over the last couple of weeks, Tony and I have posted, we've received a a number of, uh, resumes. We're excited about, um, the opportunities that may lie ahead. We've got some people with some experience that has have applied, um, and and a variety of, uh, experiential levels, I should say, have submitted applications. So we are hoping to initiate and commence some uh, interviews on those shortly. Um, in the meantime, knowing that there will be a couple we lag between when we are able to tender a name to you for approval for the next court clerk. And then that court clerk presumably will need to give notice to their current employer. And, um, so it's going to be another couple of weeks thereafter, uh, we're going to need another person at the court. Elizabeth, uh, will be able to, I think, limp along over the course of the next couple of weeks with help from a more experienced um, court clerk who might be able to continue the training. Judge Filippo and I, um, reached out to a couple of different, uh, names that were tendered to us through the eight judicial districts uh, Office of Court Administration downtown and eventually found one, a woman named, uh, Dawn Gothier, uh, who I referenced in the email that I sent to Supervisor Bach back on February eight. Um, Dawn is, uh, I telephone interviewed her and she's been with the village of Pew for eleven and a half years. She's a full time court clerk. She's already trained a couple of other court clerks in town and village settings, namely in Lancaster and Blaisdell. And although she's full time, she seems willing and able to give us a couple of half days. Um, that's important to us, in particular to the judges. When we're on the bench, it can get a little crazy sometimes depending upon, um, that's a terrible way to put it. It can become complicated sometimes, uh, when you're on the bench, depending upon, uh, the cases in front of you and how complicated they may be. Um, and Elizabeth, uh, as Alex put it, uh, drove the drove the car, uh, last Wednesday. But we had a relatively, um, light docket and, um, Elizabeth's going to, I think, need more training and more help. So that's my long way around saying, uh, until we come back to you with recommendation for a new uh, town court clerk, I'd like to ask you that you please consider approving Dawn Gothier to, um, uh, support the court and in particular, help continuing the the good training that Elizabeth is getting. Um, uh, in a temporary fashion over the next several weeks. Um, you know, I'm expecting a couple of half days a week, uh, is what that'll be. And I would expect that the monies that would otherwise have been paid to Ms. Garbiso may be available now to help supplement and serve to compensate Ms. uh, Gothier at the rate, uh, I referenced in my, my email. And and I I I'm happy to entertain any questions. Uh, I know that you're going to be, uh, entertaining this particular item at five oh, looks like five N, you have the resignation of Ms. Garbiso and five oh is this particular request, so. Um, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer. Alternatively, I appreciate your support.
No, I I've known Dawn, uh, worked with her through, you know, through the courts and she's excellent. Uh, she she gets things, I mean, she she really is excellent, uh, and, uh, knows the system well. So I'm I'm glad that she's, uh, able to help out.
Yeah, we're.
We should, this is, this is Tony, by the way. We we should add that we did reach out to Maggie Theorakis and Theodarakis and Claire to see if we could get a local flavor. Um, but neither of them really were able to 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 help us. So we had to turn to Dawn Gothier.
And and I I think there's some advantages in the the pedagogy of having a clerk from another court take a look at what we're doing and help, um, uh, maybe bring in some, uh, some, some tax, some some of their practices to our core and and to help criticize our court a little bit to see whether or not we're doing everything as well as we could be doing, because we might be able to borrow some great ideas that they're doing over in Dupuy. They're a very busy court. Um, and they, I think they have three full time court clerks over there. And, um, uh, they're, they're going to be able to help us, I think. So thank you for your remarks, Jim. Appreciate that. And thank you, Tony, um, for joining us.
Hmm, thank you, Jeff and Tony. Thanks. Anybody else want to address the board on any items on the agenda?
I don't know if you guys want to talk to us. I want to just, we didn't know if you had any questions about the programs that we had proposed.
Um, well, when we get to that item on the agenda, yeah. Okay, all right. If not, we'll move on to unfinished business and we got, uh, the code red policy. Um, do I have any motions on that?
Like to make a motion to adopt the, uh, code red policy as written. With the understanding, we'll take a look at in a year and see if we need to make any changes to it.
And Jim, with a second, any discussion? Um, I just want to thank you guys for putting it together and taking the time to do that.
It's like taking us like four years, right?
All good things.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, it was a lot of work. Um, I'm sure it's going to work out well, though.
Yeah. Again, we'll just need everybody to be active on the emails and we can, we can figure out how we'll use it and work out any bugs, so.
All in favor? I opposed and that is carried. So next we go into new business and I just have to add one item. And this is, this is on Q. We have the billing, uh, the budget transfer, the billing department. But we didn't put on there the, um, request from Liz to, um, extend all. It was stapled. It's it might be on the back of your, do you look at Q?
All right, yeah, that is.
So, um, no, that's in here. Yeah, see it?
Yeah.
Q, okay. So we just have to add, I, what I did was Q one and Q two. So if we could just add Q two. Request from Elizabeth to. Keep Paul Kulik as a part time employee. We have a motion to add that.
So moved.
Motion by Jim, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
I opposed and that is carried. Okay. Next, we, on the new business, we have the temporary use permit for Bruski. We talked about that at the work session. Dave handles parking. Everything seems to be in order. Looks like we have everything here, insurance and everything. So I would entertain a motion on this. So moved. Motion to approve the use permit and. Second, second, any discussion? All in favor? And that is carried. Next, this request from Councilman Snyder and doing the vinyl floors in the West Falls. Library at a cost, a low cost of four thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars. From Lowe's having highway department install it. And this money is coming from the buildings and grounds and repairs and the contingent account, half, half and half. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we talked about this in the work session and this is the gas, the town gas wells and a new field service ink. To take over and maintain them at a cost of a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. Some ancillary costs down here is eleven hundred dollars for a meter. And there's product that it has to be used, desiccant. So we just don't know what those costs are. These, I think these wells generate about twelve thousand dollars a year right now.
Was it that much? I thought it was less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, it's, and that's what we budget for. So, and so we want to prove this and then, and maybe do some talks about. Training our own staff. So I have a motion to approve field service to take over our gas well maintenance.
So moved.
Motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next, we have the pyrotechnic display service agreement. This is for. Annual Fourth of July celebration and it's in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars. And this is with Skylighters of New York, the same company we've been using for many, many years. We have a motion to approve the supervisor to sign the contract with Skylighters in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is just for clarification, I believe, I remember this from last year correctly. The actual amount is determined based on the donations or receive, or do we commit to sixteen thousand dollars?
We, we committed sixteen, we did it last year too. We usually get. That amount and I don't know what we have right now. Do you, Marissa? But it generally covers it.
That's what I thought.
A great, great display.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, it's good for the community. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed and that is carried. Next is the water fund balance, a request from Kathleen Mopbit. To the following districts that have fund balance. She wants to take five thousand dollars per district. And add it to Z P, which is the private roads and this twenty thousand dollar transfer. Will correct at this time a twelve thousand two hundred forty-one dollar deficit and create a swamp fund balance. Future maintenance, maintenance costs. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jim, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Next is the local intro law. Notice of public hearing. Please take notice that the public hearing will be held at the town board of the town of Aurora on the twenty-seventh day of February two thousand twenty-three. At seven PM at the Aurora Municipal Center, five seventy-five Oakwood Avenue, East Aurora, New York. In which hearing parties and interested citizens shall have an opportunity to hear. To be heard on the adoption of the local law of the town of Aurora for the year two thousand twenty-three to amend chapter one oh one. Of the codes of the town of Aurora to increase the maximum annual income eligibility for disabled persons with limited incomes. And to receive a real property tax exemptions. Do I have a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second by Chuck, second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. And as carried, and this is another public hearing and it's for the same time and date, but this is. To increase the maximum annual income eligibility for alternate, alternative veterans exemptions. To receive a real property tax exemption. So this will be in the same night, same time. Do I have a motion to set that public hearing?
So moved.
Second by Joe, second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed and that is carried. Uh, next, this is the. Request from the code enforcement officer, Elizabeth Cassidy. And this is for the arts, West Falls Center for Arts, eighteen fifty-three Davis Road. And this is for a site plan and special use permit. For the action that is listed that we talked about in the work session. So do I have a motion to refer this site, this plan to the planning board?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck.
Second.
By Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
I'm gonna stay.
And you're, okay, recruiting yourself?
Yes, I am.
All right, that's because you got a financial one. I'm sorry.
I get paid one beer, one beer a week.
Um, next, we have the. Site plan seeker. For the ten forty-five Davis Road. And we talked about this at the. Work session, so I can do the, what I'll do is I'll do the seeker now. And then we'll do the site plan motion that Joe is working on down there. So this is for the gas station at ten forty-five Davis Road. And. Unless you want me to read all the seekers, I'll just do the resolution. Resolve that the town board of town Aurora declares itself lead agency with regards to the seeker. For the site plan application for additions to the building and additional parking lot at ten forty-five Davis Road. And further resolved that after considering the actions stated here on. Reviewing the criteria contained in section six eleven dot one one of the rules and regulations of the state environmental quality review act. And determines that the action is an unlisted action and further resolve that the town board of the town of Aurora. Is determined that this unlisted action will result in no significant adverse impacts of the environment and therefore. An environmental impact statement may not be prepared and further resolve that a negative declaration is issued. With regard to the site plan for ten forty-five Davis Road. Do I have a motion to adopt that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed and that is carried. And next we have a site plan. And Joe, do you want to take stab at that?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the site plan for ten forty-five. Davis Road with the exception that parking may change contingent upon. The approval of the septic system by Erie County Health Department.
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Not too bad there, Joe.
Thank you. I mean, Chuck really set him up.
I just spiked it. That was my job on the volleyball team.
Are we gonna, we're gonna let that one just go, are we?
Just like them.
Twenty bucks later. All right, next we have the agreement. With the Boys and Girls Club. And this is about the thirty-five thousand dollars that we give them every year. Increments of nine thousand dollars in installments for installments. This is something that we budget for and do every year. And do I, you guys want me to read the whole resolution or?
I, I don't need you to read the whole.
Okay, all right, then I would ask that. We authorize the supervisor to sign the contract between the Boys and Girls Club for the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for the. Two thousand twenty-three year.
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried. Thank you.
They do a great job. They really do.
They do. All right, now. Is Megan out there? This is your time to shine here.
Actually, she, she should have been here at audience one, right?
So you have a couple of.
Yep, I've got two. One of them is mine and one is Andrea's, so I'll do.
When you have that microphone.
Game on first, that's all right.
Yeah.
Um, so my. So you can come up now, it doesn't matter. So for game on, after watching all the programs last summer, I kind of was thinking about doing some different things. And then a couple other towns or other. Places have done a sports camp, which I thought that'd be kind of fun, but then I kept thinking about it and mulling about it and. I feel like it'd be great to have the kids come in and just play for two hours and not be super structured with. Okay, you're gonna learn how to do this and you're gonna do this, this and this. I'd like to get a group of fifth and sixth graders to come in, which seems to be our biggest group. That we have coming through. And just come in, play for two hours, supervise plays. We'll have a couple games that are sports. We can do volleyball, anything. Disc golf, there's so many fun things you can do in the park, kind of pick, do a group decision and just have them play. And that is my idea.
Very good, yeah.
Great idea.
Any questions?
Burn off some of that energy.
Right, I think, I think it's just a great, kind of fun way to do it. Rob would kept talking last summer at the park. How about the kids used to just come and play? It was just open playtime. And it kind of inspired me to do this, so we'll see. Hopefully it works.
Sure, okay, yeah. And then your other.
I'm gonna introduce Andrea Ball here.
Actually, I really like this, even this one even.
So I'm every all great area federal credit union, resident of East Aurora, obviously, town. My kids went into the, the school district with East Aurora. I'm pretty much know all of you here. But in any event, what, what I propose is to do some financial education and literacy programming with the recreation department. Essentially, it is utilizing their class and their, their, I don't know, you want to talk, address that their classroom there. It can has about forty-five students or attendees. This is a complimentary type service that our credit union actually offers. As one of our core principles is information, education and training. So it's something that we're doing a little bit more outreach in our community. We're housed our headquarters in Orchard Park. We also have a branch in East Aurora. We service Oliveri County. I'm tasked as the financial literacy type chair and bringing that education to the community. So we are partnered with the East Aurora School District and it's another avenue to get these kids kind of a little bit more invested in what money is and a little bit of. Learning a little bit of the basics before they actually go to high school or college and then of course bringing the. The, that education and that financial literacy education to the adults as well. With COVID and everything else, it's a nice way to kind of reintroduce budgeting, savings, earning, learning. And we're partnering hopefully with the educational element in the programming part of it with the recreation department, so. I think you all have the proposal from what, what was kind of the outline, you know, and it's, it's kind of working together with the town, what the needs are. Community, what are the needs of the students and we're offsetting some of the resources and giving some of those resources to the teachers. So I'm working with the different counselors as well.
Well, I can't think of what other, or need, needed thing.
I agree.
Wonderful idea.
Great idea.
Do you have any other questions in regards to? How, how, when?
I guess, I, I maybe you said this and I'm sorry. Oh, so it'd be in the evening. Nevermind, I. So the, the time and the where answered both of my questions on this document in front of me, so I'm good, thank you.
Yeah, so it's basically, it's, you know, the, the location would be in the classroom of the, of the rec department. And then, you know, we're probably looking either a one, Monday or a Wednesday evening session, either something right after school for the kids. Or something a little bit later for the adults.
And who's, I mean, there's no cost to it, so.
No, no, it's a complimentary service without, well, we do. I actually work with seven different high schools and bring in the program that we actually have. On a financial literacy program and we sponsor, I have seven high schools that I'm working with right now.
Great, wonderful.
Two great buildings.
Nice, good.
Any questions?
Anglers.
Great ideas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would entertain a motion to. Approve both game on and budget basics.
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Right.
And that is carried, passed. Another recreation request, this is from Chris. Approval is requested for Chris to travel to the I C. I S C A International Senior Cup from March twentieth. Until March twenty-sixth, east has several swimmers that have qualified for this meet. In Saint Peterburg, Burgs, Florida, Chris travel expenses will be covered by the East Aurora Swim Team's Booster Club. As in years past, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and that is carried. Next, we have a request from Donna Bodecker, senior citizen rec leader. And she's requesting us to accept the donation of three hundred dollars from the South Town Needle Nuts. Okay, art guide. The group meets in a, in their building monthly and would like the money to be placed in the line TA one thousand dot ninety. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Joe. Second, second by, was it a tie?
Chuck.
Luke, okay.
I don't want to be associated with Joe, so let it go to Chuck.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. And that is carried. Next, some sad news, this is the resignation. It's my deepest regrets that I must submit my two weeks notice at this time is court clerk. Here in East Aurora, my day, last day will be February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Here in New York Town Court, Court, Court. It may, if I may. I would like to use my three personal days on February thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth. And be paid out of my eighty hours vacations. I would like to currently cancel my dental revision. And I would like to extend my sincerest gratitude for the amazing opportunity to work for such a beautiful community. And wish all the best to my fellow coworkers. And this is Alexandria. Are busy. Do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And that is carried, which brings us to oh. This is request from the honorable Jeffrey Markello. As you know, our town. Justice Court is losing Alexandria Caravasio from the post as senior court clerk. And her last day will be on Friday, February tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Goes on to what Jeff had just talked to us about, what Mrs. Gothier. Will, who has worked for the village of Pew for the last eleven and a half years, will be helping and training Elizabeth. And we will actually be putting her on as a ten ninety-nine employee. And. Is there a request, twenty-two dollars an hour? And you have a time, a day starting day or anything? Is it on there?
Uh, yeah, we'd like her to begin ASAP.
Okay.
And just by way of further background there, I know she's already been in touch with Elizabeth. Elizabeth reached out to her last week and they've already had some communication. So they can hit the ground running, but we, we certainly want her in court on Wednesday night this week. Had some communication so they can hit the ground running, but we we certainly want her in court on Wednesday night this week for me.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Luke.
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? Only that the, of course, for a long as time you guys were were in good shape and then all of a sudden. Uh, last couple of years, it's been rough for you guys, so I, I appreciate what you do. Um, COVID, everything is, uh, it's been a rough road, but. We'll get there. Uh, all in favor?
I.
I opposed and as carried. Next, this is a, uh, request. From Kathleen Moffett. Is a budget transfer. And it's just a prevent an overdrawn, uh, appropriation account. Um. And this is for medical, uh, reimbursement, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Second by Luke, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed and that is carried. Uh, next we have Q one. And this is a budget transfer for Assistant Code Officer. Um, this is from Kathleen Moffett. Request approval to transfer to cover costs for newly hired Assistant Code Enforcement Officer. As well as the overlap with the current Assistant Code Officer. Um, Paul. And this is to reduce A one nine nine zero contingent account, current balance of forty thousand by twenty-five hundred. And increase A three six two zero dot one zero zero Assistant Code, uh, uh, Enforcement Officer by twenty-five hundred dollars. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And it is carried, and next this is a request from Elizabeth Cassidy, our Code Enforcement Officer. And she, uh, requests the town board approve to keep Paul Keelick. On as a part-time employee through the end of two thousand twenty-three to work through the office. Transition in February and then. With Rich, uh, Miga. In the training of the New York State Certification. Do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Motion by Jim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Chuck, any discussion?
Just, I have a quick question, so, uh, Paul is leaving when the other guy comes on full time, is that, am I reading that correctly?
So, Paul, um. My, um. Paul, it has agreed that to cover the office on his normal four hours a day when, um, Rich is in training. Um, and I just asked that, uh, Paul be kept on on his regular hours through the end of February, just so during the transition.
So Paul still be on staff, but he's, he's picking up additional.
Right.
Why? Rich isn't training.
Right, so for the end of February, he'll be here on his normal and then, um, and then he'd be done except for when Rich is training and then. He would come in and assist.
Thank you.
And are you gonna use him after that, uh, like?
Well, I guess it all depends on, um, when. When Rich's training is, um, and that's, that's dictated by the state in their scheduling, um. It's likely that he could have all six classes done before the end of this year, um, which would leave us in good place. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure how quickly he'll get into that cycle.
Yep. Okay. Uh, any other questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. And that is carried. Uh, next we have the, uh. The term from Don for Don Owens and the Environmental, uh, Erie County Environmental Management Council. Will expire May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Um, do we want to designate Don as, uh, for additional two-year term to May thirty-first? Two thousand twenty-five, um, I would make a motion to do that and.
Is it just Don expressing an interest in continuing?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion?
Sorry, jumped out of line there.
All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed and that is carried. Next, we have the. Standard workday and reporting resolution for elected, uh, and appointed officials. And do I have a motion to adopt this, um? Is listed.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. And next we have the highway request to purchase. A loader. And we talked about this in the work session. This is the two thousand twenty-three case compact loader. And the cost, at a cost of twenty-seven thousand ninety-two dollars. After trading in the two seven, two thousand seventeen Caterpillar backhoe for seventy thousand. And this. Is through Milton Cat. And it'll be. Uh, paid out of snow materials line account DB five one four two dot four four nine. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Chuck, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried in our last item. Is this, uh, request from Elizabeth Bezio to surplus the two thousand seventeen backhoe. Wait a minute, are we gonna? We have to surplus that to trade in, okay?
You're, you're.
Alright. Alright.
So you surplus it.
Right. So we need approval to surplus the two thousand seventeen Caterpillar backhoe. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
By Chuck.
Second.
Second by Jim, any discussion? All in favor?
I.
I opposed. And that is carried. Next communications. And reports. And we have the town clerk and town tax. Two thousand twenty-two annual report. And we have the January two thousand twenty-three reports for the town clerk and tax. Town clerk, water. Uh, Recreation. Building Department. Work requisitions. Senior Center, Dart Control, uh, East Aurora Police and the Supervisors Report. Next, we have business. Uh, from board members and we'll start with Joe tonight.
Uh, I'll be quick, it's been a long meeting, we had open space committee meeting, they're continuing to work on plans for a trail at the other side of Major's Park. I think they're doing some, making some great progress and as we discussed before. Possibly figuring out a linkage between, uh, Majors and Owens Falls, but, uh, that's gonna be done in conjunction with the folks from Owens Falls. And that's a ways off, so they're still planning to kind of the engineering feat of getting through some marshy space. And we also have to wait till the spring to get down and actually look what we're dealing with. Um, I attended the meeting for Aces, uh, the environmental group in Aurora, they are extraordinarily pleased with the work the town has done. Uh, towards the climate smart community and they, we were singing our praises to how, uh, uh, seriously we're taking that initiative. Which was fantastic, it was a good feeling and last but definitely not least, I met with Dan Castle. Uh, you might be aware, there's funding available for comprehensive plans through the county. Uh, and we are right at the top of the list because we are as out of date as anybody else, so, because we never adopted officially the last one. So I think there's a really good chance that we will find a funding source there as opposed to the CFA, which we'd have to wait to come around again. So it was a very productive meeting, I think we have a real good shot at it.
Great, thank you. Jim?
Yeah, uh, and and just kind of build on that with Bill Panzika had said earlier about, uh, West Falls Center for the Arts, uh. That, that's a project that started about eight years ago. Uh, with basically there was space that was unused, so we offered, uh, from six to eight in the morning. Kids, uh, to learn how to play piano and we had about, uh, we had, uh, eight dedicated kids that came. Every single day, Monday through Friday before school. And we thought this is a great space and we've been building and building ever since and, um. Uh. We, we don't. Think of ourselves as biting up more than we can chew, but we always try and. Uh, just do better, better and better and we have our, uh, really amazing and creative friends. Next door Rico and Jill. Uh, Rivera, who, uh, are just, uh, extremely. Uh, talented, dedicated and smart and I think, um. Uh, we're gonna try and do it right. Um, and we'll, uh, certainly be asking, uh. Liz and everybody else involved to, to help us, uh, do it right if it, if it does actually go forward. So.
Good things going on in West Falls.
Lot of, lot of really good things and I think, uh, I appreciate, uh, everybody on the board, but Luke and Joe for helping. Spearhead that, that grant, uh, at least they tried for the grant and I think, um. But like we said in the grant proposal, we're, we're gonna go forward regardless. Uh, and try and get the funds for it, but, you know. Uh, we, we, we're just gonna try and keep going forward, it's just gonna happen a little faster if we do get the grant money.
Yeah, keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you, absolutely.
I checked you there.
Yes, um, a couple of weeks ago, my wife and I attended the South Wales Fire Company Fireman's Installation Dinner along with. Uh, Dave Gunner and, and his wife Laura, as always, it's a wonderful evening and that, and the recognition. As I've often said here, uh, I guess you attend these every year, but, but every year it is just amazing how many. Calls, the, the, you know, the top members make and, uh, this year. The top on. Was, I believe it was a hundred and eighty-five calls that they made it this past year and that's just, that's, that's dedication. Um. And then also, today was the first day that a new code enforcement offer had his, his, uh, first day. And, uh, this will be a great help. To Liz, who has, uh, really, really. Went over and above over the past, hmm, year, year and a half, two years and, uh, just done so much, I know we give you accolades. Often, but you deserve it, you, you know, you, you shoot an email to his on a, to Liz on a Saturday. And, uh, you get a response on Saturday. I shoot an email to her at twenty after seven and, uh, twenty-five after seven, there's the responses, so. You know, she's. Thanks for everything you've done though, Liz. That's all.
Look.
Um, yep, now that we have code right under our, uh, in, in the past, we should look, go back to the social media policy and take a look, so if we can get any. Comments to that by the end of the week, then we can take a look at it by Wednesday to get it on the schedule for the next meeting, should be good. Um, I spoke about the New York Forward Grant, um, but just so we, and, and if anyone is interested in coordinating in the, the other opportunities in New York we have coming up. We spoke a little bit last year about playgrounds, um, there's some rails and trails funding out there that we should be looking at that a municipality has to apply for. Um, which can help out the Conservation Society probably more than anybody else, um, but, uh. We should, if anybody is interested in working on those applications or where we want to try to. Combine our forces, then that would be great. Um. The Climate Smart Community Task Force, we continue to gather, uh, a lot of information, thanks to Liz DeViso, who has been. Providing a lot of the information to our volunteers, um, and then after taxes are over. Uh, we're gonna have to start working over here and getting some additional, um, with additional. Uh, invoices and things, um, because it's one of the mandatory, uh, tasks in order to get the bronze status, so. We'll continue to work on that, the meeting is Wednesday, Joe's gonna be there, I, I can't make it this Wednesday, so, um, we'll continue to work with that.
The time is it Wednesday?
Six. Now, the third Wednesday of each month is six, so. It's good. So a lot going on, just keep on working away. Um. And then, uh. I guess no update on the ambulances, but seeing that we have a legislator here that will make the opportunity to prod from that angle as well. So.
Thanks, Luke. Well, um, as far as myself, um, I can't believe it's been five years, but the, um, police contract. Is, uh, coming up in June, uh, myself and Councilman Snyder, um. Have a, uh, meeting with. Um, the village. Administrator and mayor. On Thursday, I believe it is. Um, to start, um, negotiations between the village and the town. And, um. We look to get that, uh, taken care of so we can move on, so. Uh, the other thing I have is, um, tomorrow. Very special day, it's Elizabeth's birthday. So happy birthday, um, to you Elizabeth. And how'd you get on Valentine's Day, how'd you, how'd you work that up? Yeah. So. I'm not gonna ask. So, uh, that's all I have, um.
Christ, they didn't have that technology, you know, twenty-five years ago.
Um, next we have business from, or, um, audience, which is, uh, audience two, which. Anyone from the audience can address the board on any items whatsoever, if you. Care to do so, please come up to the mic and give us your name. Nobody? Wants? Okay. And then we'll go to staff reports, uh, Tim? Nothing, Brad? Paul? Megan? You still? I couldn't see. Uh, Shane? Geez, you guys are easy tonight, wow, Dave?
Just an update on East Filmar Bridge, uh, we've already gotten most of the trees down, um, we only have maybe two or three left. And we actually started building the road this morning, um, it's going really well, so if you get a chance to go over there, um, we're stripping and moving along, weather's really helping. Uh, just echo with, uh, Chuck on the fire department, um. And I just wanted to let the board know, I don't know how many people I told this, but East Aurora Fire Department approached me about helping them to build a. Extra extrication. Facility at their fireman's field, um, I think it's a good idea for them, um, I have some used guide rail. What we would do is, uh, dig it out and make a Millings parking lot and then put up guide rails so they can lay a car on it and. Practice, I assume the board's okay with that, I think it's a great thing to help them and, uh, you know, we always are supportive of all they do. So, just wanted to give you a heads up on that, so. Thanks.
Liz.
Um, yep, so today was Rich's first day, um, I did take him on a tour of the building, I haven't introduced him to everyone, I will do that. Um, later this week, but if any of you are ever in town hall, please do stop in the office. Um, just to say hi, um, he will begin, um, well. Right away, but, um, he, um, he'll start attending meetings over the next month or two and then eventually, um, you know, we'll take over. Um, at least a portion of the meeting schedule, um, but, uh, I appreciate you keeping Paul on, um, as coverage. Uh, this month and for the rest of the year, I do appreciate that, uh, and that's all I have.
Thanks, uh. Elizabeth, I didn't ask if there was anybody online that wanted to talk to us, was there?
No, just the judge was on earlier.
Alright, I don't think I missed anybody, uh, next. Need a motion to approve the abstract? I'll make that motion, motion by Chuck.
Second.
Second by Joe, any discussion?
Actually, I had one question, uh, and I meant to bring this up earlier and I forgot. The, we're paying for fire hydrants to the Erie County Water Authority for like a hundred and sixty-eight, what? Hundred and sixty-eight thousand, what exactly is that, I, I don't understand. What we're paying for there.
The hydrant, that's the, um. What do they call it, the maintenance fee or the?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the bills.
Any. Town that either has direct service with the authority or that they lease manage, you. Rent the hydrants from the Erie County Water Authority and that fee is per hydrant. And it covers any maintenance or anything that they need to do on the hydrant.
Gotcha. Alright, thank you. And that's an annual fee of hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
Yeah, if you look at the Erie County Water Authority tariff.